Call a meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, he won't.
No, he won't.
Okay, just make a note that Councilman Brungard is absent. Everybody else is present. We'll go with old business, approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes of August 4th, 2022 are attached. Need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 4th, 2022 as presented.
Bill move.
I have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Uh, what are the agendas? Could I, could I address the council after a meeting? Open mind?
You can do that now.
Oh, okay.
Just come on up and state your name and your address and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Jeff Schugart, 110 Ferncliff Street, Lansing, I guess that should be well known. Well, there's one complaint that I have, and that is the speed limit on East Mary Street from Forest Street for about four blocks. I think it should be increased to 30 miles an hour. And that's one of the things. And then I'd like to give an attaboy, and I don't know if it's to this council, but for the building of Trails, no, not Trail, I'm sorry, Angel Falls Trail. That had, that is a very used, highly-used trail. In fact, it's a destination trail. I've seen people from Leavenworth, I've seen people drive just to walk that trail and everything. I think that's one of the good things, and maybe you could add more. And then one other item, and that is the, uh, pool. I'm glad to see that you're building a pool. I was a little bit confused, though. I saw a for sale sign on the, let's see, between Bittersweet and West Mary, right there across from the, is that land for sale, or is that where you were planning to put the pool?
I think that property you're looking at, it's under contract.
Oh, by the city or by someone else?
Under contract.
Oh, top secret, okay.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mum's the word.
Mum's the word, okay.
There's gonna be a vote for the pool.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not gonna build a pool just yet.
Yeah. If the vote passes, we will build a pool. Yes.
Oh, if I can add one more item. I am glad you are putting that on the ballot. I will be a positive vote for that, and I will probably be using it, because it's right in my neighborhood area and everything.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming, sir.
Appreciate your comments. All right, new business. Item number two is Ordinance 1086, Court Fines and Fee Schedule. This ordinance establishes the fines and fee schedule for municipal court, and these changes must be adopted by ordinance in order to implement. Need a motion to approve Ordinance 1086, adopted by the City of Lansing Municipal Court, fines and fee schedule.
Bill move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Does this put us in with all the other cities, basically, with their, their fees and everything? I mean, that's what we've been, I thought that's what we've been trying to do all along, isn't it? Get them all, get them all in line with like, everybody's the same?
These would be set by the municipal court judge, and I think he has guidelines that he has to do. So, I mean, we, our fees shouldn't be way out of whack from other places. Is that your understanding as well, Matt?
Really, the only fee we're changing is the intake fee and the impound fee, and that's because the Humane Society has increased their fees, and we're basically a pass-through. So, we, people who have their animal taken there, they come in and pay that fee, and then we turn around and they bill us for the same amount. So, it's just to cover the cost of that, that increase.
I knew, I thought that's what we were trying to become standard with everybody else on, about everything that we're doing, you know, building codes and all, and I just thought maybe that's.
Yeah, we just, we just charge people what we get charged for that.
But yeah, this is court fines and fees and things like that, that's set by Judge Fuller.
Yeah, the state.
And this is every year, we do this every year.
Yes.
Right.
Right. There's any changes, yeah.
Did we add the driving under influence, driving an airplane because all the other cities had one?
Well, there was that kid that landed on the interstate in Kansas, on the other side of Kansas City a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Landed his plane, and he was hammered. Like, he was like 26 years old, 24 years old, young guy.
So, those fees we aren't, we aren't arbitrarily adding, that's, that is driven by state, by state mandates and fees that they've included into those fee schedules. We're just updating ours to match the state.
Right. So, I mean, you can either go through and make your own ordinance and change all of those fines and fees, or you adopt the ordinance that's put forth by the state.
Yeah, but this, this one is on court fines and fees, and we're gonna get to the one you're addressing in a few minutes.
That's the traffic.
We're not there yet.
That's the traffic ordinance.
Yeah, we haven't got to that part yet.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on this one? Okay, I have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number three is Ordinance 1087, 2022 edition of the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities, 49th edition. This ordinance adopts the annual standard traffic ordinance published by the League of Kansas Municipalities with changes outlined in the ordinance. Need a motion to approve the ordinance number 1087, adopting the 2022 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities, 49th edition.
Bill move. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Marcus.
So, going through all of them, one of them that I talked to you, Tim, about was the, um, the disobeying crosswalk with pedestrian in the crossing or something like that. I thought there was something in all of those, and I did not find anything like that. So, there really isn't a fine that would penalize or ticket someone for speeding through a crosswalk with pedestrians in the crosswalk.
I think there is, I mean, I think a lot of this stuff is just the updates. So, once the council updates it, we have these books that all of our officers,
Yep.
you know, go through and everything. In that section that you had shown me.
They've been, probably know.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, what you had shown me was legit, the, the thing that the chief and I had spoken about a little bit with that item, it, that section that you'd shown me continues, and it kind of talks about how there's, there's also responsibility on the pedestrian.
Right.
Like, if it's bumper-to-bumper traffic, the pedestrian shouldn't be walking on the crosswalk.
Right.
But, but no, I mean, I, I think that's, that's on the books, but that's not changing.
So, without going through like four or five of these things that I went through and identified, my question would be that the fines should be increased, you know? One of them was reference, you know, obeying construction zone signs. Failure to obey construction zone signs turn into construction zone workers being killed, Yeah. you know, in the line of duty and so forth. And that fine was real small. Illegal parking in handicapped space. That fine was like $50. But to me, that just annoys the crap out of me. Someone parking in a handicap without an official handicap should be fined $500 to $1,000, not a little $50 ticket. But if these fines, parking, parking in a no parking zone, that should be a high fine too, and that's on page seven out of 10. But these are just four of them that I picked out. Now, if these are, if these fines are in with the other cities, I get it. But if we have any kind of adjustment for these kind of fines, for a few of these things, then my recommendation is, is that we immediately look at someone parking in a handicap or parking in a no parking zone should be paying a lot more than like a $50 or a $90 fine. Just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, you know, honestly, that, I don't think that's come up recently, so I, I guess we could talk to Judge Fuller about that, or I'm, I'm not sure what the procedure would be.
Well, this is just a standard traffic offense that you, you know, that you can adopt, and I think League does a, a good job of making sure that municipalities are all kind of in conformity. But yeah, you can certainly pick and choose certain things if you choose to do so. Like, for example, not saying we would, because it's various reasons, but you could take the DUI or OUI statute out of local ordinance and everything, we go to the county. But then again, any and all fees then would be collected by the county, go to the state instead of staying here.
Stay in here.
So, so there's things you can do if you choose to do so.
So, do we have the ability to adjust any speed limits? Since Mr. Schugart is here, can we discuss that, or do we have to have a work session?
No, I, I think on arterials, I thought we needed some type of at least basic engineering study or, or speed study, kind of seeing what the, the speeds are, I believe.
The last discussion I have with League on that very issue was, it's been a number of years ago, because it would always talk about traffic study. Obviously, the concern was always, traffic studies cost money. However, the League, at that time with Sandy Jack, Jacko, I think I pronounced her name correctly, she had indicated that that could be as a matter of patrol officer sitting out there, taking, you know, samples and logging them down on a daily basis, so you could determine what the kind of average speed of the number of cars, you know, those kind of things. Be kind of labor-intensive, you're putting your officer out there to sit on one spot as opposed to a official traffic study, but it would be cheaper. But it would give you a basis to then act on what you want to do.
And maybe the one that's jumping out at me was more so because we got grant, grant dollars, but I remember when we adjusted De Soto Road, didn't that increase either five miles an hour or 10 miles an hour? You guys remember?
45 to 40.
Yeah, I think, I think we did do, it was like a $2,000 engineering study where it was somebody who wasn't affiliated with the city, they were looking at the speeds, looking at the sightlines and the width of the road and all of that stuff. But, you know, that, that might have just been because we were getting grant dollars from the state, but, but I can talk to Public Works about that and figure that out.
Okay, because I, I see, I mean, I get his point.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I know the school's there, but we could do it school time like we do with other schools.
We had a big controversy about that stretch of road he's talking about years ago, because we had, we had most of our school zones down to 15 miles an hour, and the state statute was 20 miles an hour, wherever we adjusted everything, so it was 20 miles an hour through there because of the school. And then just when you get on the other side of it, there's a speed sign that goes 35 to go on out, past the old lost stadium, so.
All right, well, if we can look into it.
And some, and some cities even go as far as to what Don's point is, would be when children are present, because sometimes the school hours are, and nobody's around, and it's a, will tend to wanna, hey, there's no kids here, and they pick up. So, you can actually write in your ordinances that, you know, it's like when children are present. Now, you know, I, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just saying that's an option.
Well, that's like what we did over here on West Mary. We, 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 we put in the, the blinking lights, you know, and when they're blinking, you know, it's 20 miles an hour, and when they're not blinking during the summer, it's about 30, 35 during the winter, so.
But some, but some school districts don't adjust their signs, like if there's a holiday and school's not in session, the light will still flash even though school's not in session.
Right.
I've seen that, like Linwood, if you go 32 Highway.
And that's happened over here, too.
I just, I was just curious and to see what we need to do to look into it.
Yeah.
We can definitely look into it.
Yeah, we can have.
I disagree with Marcus about these fines. I think those are non-moving violations. I know it's, it's a bad thing to park in a handicap spot, I'll agree with you with that, I would never do it, but a $50 fine for that, for me, would, would teach me a lesson not to do it again.
Not a hundred dollars?
I'm not a rich man, Marcus. Well, and the flip side is, you're gonna make it 500, or is somebody gonna be able to pay the price?
No, I was being.
If it's somebody that doesn't make a lot of money, $50 is a lot to them. I get irritated when I see people parked in them, but, you know, what are you gonna do?
Anything else? Greg, did you have something else? Or is that it?
He answered my question, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle? Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is Ordinance number 1088, 2022 edition of the Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities, 38th edition. This ordinance adopts the annual Uniform Public Defense Code published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. I need a motion to approve Ordinance 1088, adopting the 2022 Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities, 38th edition.
Bill move. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one? You know, a lot of ordinances tonight. Okay, no discussion, go ahead, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle? Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is Executive Session for Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel. So, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to non-elected personnel matters, exception KSA 754319-Brova-1, for five minutes, beginning at 7:16 and ending at 7:21.
Bill move. Second.
I have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle? Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
I move to open, uh, move to open session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to return to open session, call roll.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard? Oh, sorry. Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Marcus.
Or? Motion passed. We're back to open session. So, I will make a statement for the record that no binding actions were taken during the executive session, and with that, I'm going to request a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a denim number six to the city administrator's contract and provide a financial incentive based on the results of the performance evaluation.
Bill move. Second.
I have, I have several motions and seconds. All of all.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, any department heads? Nothing kept. All right. City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor, the only thing I would say is that we all know about the decision on Fire District, however, just from a technical aspect, the mandate was sent back, so the clock starts running for many 30 days for appeal purpose, but as I discussed with Tim, there is no appeal, so it's pretty much, it's, it's done. This, this case is done, the decision's made, and we're good to go from there.
Okay. Well, thanks. Appreciate that. Tim?
The, the contractor's making great progress out at Bernard Park. Uh, over the last week and a half, they've been installing a lot of those new lights, so that's been really exciting. So, yeah, we'll, we'll try to send you guys some pictures of that coming up. Uh, I put in my report that we were notified last week that the half-ton truck we ordered back in January couldn't be fulfilled. Shortly after we put the agenda out, we looked at the, the Main Street website and saw a vehicle that was pretty close to that amount. We asked the dealership if they would honor the price, so it's basically the same vehicle that we ordered back in January, except it's like a maroon color. I think we'd need to put lighting on top of it. But since it was, Main Street agreed to honor that price from the bid, we wanted to be sure you guys were okay with that. Like I said, it's slightly different from the one we bid, but half-ton Ram would be used by our building inspector. So, wanted to be sure you guys were okay with that. So, I mean, it's, it's different from what we would normally do. Everyone generally okay with that. And then Mike got me an update on the number of fiber permits that we've issued thus far on both projects. So, Clearwave has received 13 permits, AT&amp;T has received six permits. So, I know it's, I know it's a hassle to our residents, but they're making really good progress and, you know, encourage folks to hang in there. They obviously have a financial incentive with those bid bonds to make sure that they restore the yards in a reasonable fashion. But they are making good progress, that's been nice to see. And yeah, it's, it's, it's tough, but it will be done soon, I promise you guys. Those are the main things I have, unless there's any questions.
Thanks. Appreciate it. I'm gonna go around the horn. So, Jesse, you gonna start off?
The other night, me and my wife went for a three-and-a-half mile walk around Ward 3, and we walked down Angel Falls Trail, which is a great place to walk, by the way. One thing, I did notice that the trees didn't trim. No, I mean, we need to get down there and get some trees trimmed back, because if you have to duck when you're walking down the trail, that's not a good thing, but, the creek is dry as a bone, but, and then the rest of the walk, I noticed, I was just walking, and I just would point out to my wife every code violation I seen as we were walking.
That seems like a fun night to walk around.
And so, her response to me was, well, why don't somebody do something about that? And I said, I don't know the answer to that, sweetheart. So, I guess my question, and then one of the ones I noticed that really irritates me is the fences. You know, six-foot fences that are leaning on other people's properties. You know, they're not, they're not too hard to, to miss, you know? Cars parked, one, two houses that are side by side, one of them had two Jeeps parked in the grass, and one of them had a pickup parked clearing the backyard on the property line behind them. Now, so that was annoying not only to the people on each side of them, but the people behind him. You know, a couple of months ago, we changed ordinance for the, the campers and the boats being parked on a hard surface. We were supposed to send out notifications about the change of ordinance, I haven't seen anything yet on that. You know, I just, if we're, if we're gonna adopt these codes and fines, we need to enforce them. That's just my opinion.
No, it's, a couple of things that I'll, I'll just mention, so the, the fence thing, that's tough, because I mean, if, if there's any type of boundary issue or anything like that, we try not to get involved, so if it's leaning six inches one way or six inches the other, we, we don't know the exact property boundary, so we don't get involved in that stuff too much. So, Matt and Richard usually send me a, a code enforcement update every couple of weeks. The one thing that is tough, though, I mean, sometimes we'll be working on something and we'll say, hey, you've got seven days to get this cleaned up, or you have 10 days to get this cleaned up. So, it's, it's possible some of the things you saw, we've, we've noticed, but, but also, you know, shoot us those addresses and we can check it out.
The Valley and Fairlane, there's, there's.
Mr. Clemmons, yeah?
Yeah, that's an eyesore.
Yep.
A complete eyesore. If I lived in a neighborhood, I, I would put my house on the market.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Oh, oh, no, I guess you can't, yeah, you're not allowed to speak right now, sorry.
Oh, I can't speak.
Not, not right now, you can't, not when we're speaking.
Or should you be called on from here?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
But, but that was all I had. I just, I mean, Angel Falls Trail is the trees being trimmed, that we just need to be more adamant about enforcing codes for our, our communities, or our neighboring people who keep their property up, aren't being hindered by the people who are not.
That's a good point.
But, uh, and I guess my other question would go along with Angel Falls, we're having the Autumn Festival, right? Okay. And, um, are we charging for, for land usage this year for, what do you call them? Boots? Boots, yeah.
Vendors.
For-profits are being charged, nonprofits are not being charged.
Okay. I'm, I'm opposed to, to charging for the use of it. I just, I think a lot of those vendors that use that area to make a, a couple of dimes don't make a lot of money, so I would be for letting them use the property for free myself. And you would get more vendors, because I remember last year, it didn't go down very far before you ran out of vendors. That's just my opinion, so.
COVID, too.
What's that?
COVID is still an issue for a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
Oh, we can look at that. So, thanks, Jesse. Okay, Greg?
So, Mr. Schugart, thank you for coming. It's nice, I know you still can't talk, but I just want to say thank you, because it's nice to have citizens come and talk to us and tell us what's on their mind. So, I appreciate that. And Mayor, on this day, in 1920, the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which was first submitted to Congress in 1878, took 41 years to get approved, was passed, which prohibits any citizen of the United States from being denied the right to vote based on sex. That's all I have, Mayor.
A mere 20.
That's the way it was in the 20s, Doc?
Dan?
That's the way it was when Don was passed.
Sure you can talk.
Jesse, I've noticed the same things. I've seen boats on, on grass, not hard surfaces. At one house, I saw three pickup trucks and an RV all in the front yard all at once, and they were washing the RV. And yes, it did cover a sidewalk, but it, on Saturday, I don't know who to call on Saturday, code enforcement's not working. You know, so I, I don't know if that's something we need to talk about, think about. But the parking across here, where we had trouble with the semis,
Yeah.
there was an RV and a boat there. I came through to the library, and they were pulling through the grass so the boat could be going uphill. I, I still personally believe that needs to be a no parking zone.
Yeah.
Unless it's the property owner.
Yeah. What you had said about Saturdays, I, I do want to say, I think maybe a couple Saturdays a month, he'll come in in the mornings, but I think it's mainly to look for grass clippings and things like that. But, but even then, it might only be for an hour or two, but that's, that's a fair point, that, that, yeah, we're not out as much on Saturdays.
I know when we passed the ordinance on the RVs, we said that he wasn't gonna wait for phone calls, he was gonna go out and actually look for it. When does that start?
I think we were talking about early September, because we wanted to give people until after Labor Day to,
Right.
Um, I think we were talking about early September, because we wanted to give people until after Labor Day to, you know, if they have one final camping trip this summer. So I, I think we were gonna try to be a bit more strict early September.
I just want to get it in my mind, you know, of when it starts.
But I mean, I, I know we did send out voluntary notices to ones that were non-compliant and.
I know, my neighbor got one and came and saw me.
Oh, yeah.
But that's everything I had, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Clemmons, were you referring to a boat that was not hooked to a truck?
I am.
Okay.
It was beyond the front of the house with grass almost up to the top of the wheels.
Well, maybe I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about it was parked on the city street.
No, that was in front of City Hall.
Is that a boat?
A boat and an RV.
Well, the reason, okay, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, is because some cities will have an ordinance where if you have a trailer parked on the street, it must be connected to a vehicle. So that, you know, I've seen that in many cities, especially south of here, where, you know, if it's not hooked to a vehicle, you cannot just leave it sitting on the city street, so.
Understand.
Okay. So I just want, so you guys have the opportunity that you can discuss that and determine if that's something you'd want to do.
I just don't want them transferring the RV from their yard to the City Hall. I think that's not right either.
Agreed. Don?
Uh, a couple of comments, one on codes. I'm with Jesse. Uh, we have codes, and I've been pushing for the whole time I've been on the council to enforce our codes. Uh, if that means a code enforcement officer goes out and does patrol every morning or every couple of days, that's fine. But there's a lot of stuff that I've called a code guy over last month or so and said, hey, how about going checking this out? He goes, oh, yeah, that's a violation, we, we need to do the letter or do, you know, start whatever, so we need to enforce them. That, that's my only comment. Uh, question on the guys putting in AT&T and Clearwave putting in the fiber and, uh, stringing a new line and all that stuff. Uh, is our city inspector involved with any of that, going out and see what they're doing, how they're doing, when they're finishing up in certain areas, et cetera?
Um, a little bit, I know, uh, but I think for the most part, if, if people call us with questions, we'll go out and check it out, like our engineering technician has been.
I got a, a couple, the only question I would have about it, that, that, I think it's Clearwave, they're putting their stuff on the ground. You know, they're digging all the holes and putting the boxes in and pulling the tubing through and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But there's been some areas, like in my neighborhood, they've, they've been through a couple of weeks ago, pretty much got it cleaned up. But there's a couple of areas where they've left, it's still uprooted and whatever, and they haven't come back for a week or so.
Yeah.
So is, is, I don't know if there's a reason for that, or if they forgot that, oh, we gotta put a box there and we haven't done it yet.
Yeah. No, I don't think they've forgotten, maybe, maybe they moved to a different part of town or something, but.
Something like the kind of like coming out of the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a. Like, like in the corner, well, I live on a corner a lot, so you know, I had about seven holes dug across my front and side. Uh, they did back off the easement with their machine and got in the middle of my yard, but I know they'll fix that, so I, I'm not worried about that. But they did leave, how they pull some of that tubing through, like from across the street or whatever, they used some heavy wire and whatever. They buried the boxes and everything, but I got on one corner, I got some of this wire just sticking up, so. I don't know if they're gonna come back and dig that up again, or if they just forgot to clip that off below the ground and bury it or what.
We can contact Clearwave. Clearwave's been really responsive.
Oh, no, I know, I'm just, but I'm just asking these questions.
Give them a call, yeah.
I just don't know. Other than that, I don't have any, anything else, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thanks. Dave?
I don't have anything left.
Okay, Dave, thanks. Gene?
I don't have anything constructive to add to what's already been said.
Uh, before we get to Marcus, can we not have maybe just for the council, like, um, maybe a monthly summary of what code enforcement actions have taken place, so everybody gets a very good, a good idea, instead of, you know, you see something and then you're like, oh, they're not doing any code enforcement, when they could be doing a whole bunch. We're just not aware of it a lot of times, so. So, I mean, if we can get some kind of like report that we can provide them, so they get an idea, that would be helpful. Okay, Marcus?
Oh, you're good, no, good. Um, so, Tim and, and staff, I appreciate you taking care of two of the citizens, uh, with the complaints and, uh, and, and following up with them, that you had two separate instances from the street paving to the yard and the spraying and that kind of stuff. I really appreciate y'all's attention to detail on that. Uh, yep, Clearwave, uh, Clearwave did a number on the yards throughout Ward Two, I mean, they really did. Uh, they did the best they could with cleaning it up and, and trying to save, but no one predicted that, uh, July and August, we wouldn't get any rain at all. I mean, we just got our first rain, and people were walking outside standing in it going, this is what rain looks like, you know? It's been so long since we got it.
Yeah.
But, uh, it, it's coming around, and I, and I appreciate all the, all the attention to it. So we got the door hangers, that's what I was gonna say. So Clearwave went around and the door hangers are out on all the sign, all the, in our ward anyway, uh, with the cost and everything for folks to sign up. And I haven't seen anything with AT&T, because they didn't put AT&T through there, but I guess they're doing the same thing in the areas where AT&T put in, is that right?
Yeah.
Sending out postcards, I know that, because I got a postcard from them, saying that if you wanted fibers in your area, if you want to sign up, click this website.
I haven't gotten anything from AT&T.
I've got the same thing.
Clearwave, I've got mailings from them.
Okay. And again, it, Clearwave has been really responsive every time we call them, they're, they're trying to keep us posted on things. Um, AT&T fills out the permits, and they do the paperwork, but beyond that, we don't hear a lot from them, so.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, in, in all fairness, we hired Clearwave to put fiber in.
Yeah.
So they should, they should be responding a little better than AT&T would be.
Yeah.
Right?
No, no, that's, I, I get it, I get it. All right, well, with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, but before we do, Dave, you want to say something?
Yeah. In response to, uh, Tony's comment about our report being issued upon, you know, we have an issue years, since I've been on the council, we've tried it in the past, and it's, it's always gotten out of hand, or it got dropped or whatever. But if the councilman has an issue with something, it's, there's, we started a sheet, now that we've got computers, before it was a paper jam. I mean, it was, we were getting a book, I would say.
Yeah.
But now that we've got it on computer, uh, if somebody has a problem with a code, uh, gentleman here had a deal with the speed limit, and Greg and him talking about, you know, note, note that on a, on a deal, the discussion, and then Greg can bring it up on his computer. And look, we used to do all that on paper, and that's where, back then, Mayor Bernard and Mr. Blackwell was, you know, we stopped that because it got, you know, it was such a, we killed a lot of trees.
Yeah.
But I mean, is that something maybe that we could reinstate with the computer system that we have? You know, if a councilman has a problem, that we could bring it up and, and, uh, keep abreast, uh, it gives, give council and gives, uh, staff a chance to respond to it.
Yeah.
You know, and then they can look back on it and see what's being done, and then, you know.
Yeah, well, that's a good idea.
I, I mean.
There's a place on the website.
Fix-it ticket?
Yeah, we have a fix-it forum.
Yeah, fix-it forum on the website, you can go fill it out.
Well, I know there's a fix-it forum, but I'm talking about this as something, if you have an issue about, uh, uh, you have a neighbor or somebody in your deal's complaining about something wrong with the sidewalk, has code enforcement looked at it?
Well, yeah.
In response to that, look, you know, to the, the, whatever one of the council members brought up, you could note it on a.
That's something we can look into.
I was gonna say, actually, I, I think some of the software we purchased maybe a couple of years ago with that COVID money, um, I think that has like a code enforcement side to it, a code enforcement module. Um, I'm not sure if the software only lets us have a few passwords, but I know like, a lot of times if I'll email Matt and say, hey, what's going on here? He can pull up a module and say, hey, we were there June fourteenth, June nineteenth, June, you know, he, so Matt and Richard certainly have that capability. I don't know if we can get eight passwords on that, but, um, but I know we have that software for those guys.
You know, I, I understand, I understand.
But, okay, wait a minute, so that's, that's, that's like a tracking mechanism of when we actually did stuff. Well, I think what Dave's asking is about, is there something that we can just submit something and say, hey, code guy, look at this?
Yeah, the fix-it forum.
Okay, so, so probably we might want to say, I don't know if it's in, on the website or not, but if there is an issue with code enforcement, you know, anything else.
Yep.
Does fix-it form, I'm not, I'm not sure that gets, that doesn't tell me it's code enforcement, but I'm just saying.
I think there's, yeah.
The fix-it form is to report the situation. I'm talking about if we have a discussion like we're having here about speed limits or code enforcement, about, about a boat parked on the sidewalk, it's just a councilman's, it was a councilman's concern, and, but it just, like I said, it was working for a while, and I don't know if Greg remembers it or not, but he got, it got paper. It got paper logged, I mean, there, there was so many, you know, there was responses to what the councilman's comments that, you know, it was, I guess putting councilman's comments on paper was what it ended up being, but it got out of hand because it got, there were so many of them. I just wanted to present anything I can do on the computer to, you know, I think would answer a lot of questions, and there wouldn't be so much, uh.
So we can follow up with you guys better on things that you bring up?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just an idea.
Yeah.
You know, I know, like, you ain't got anything else to do.
No, we can try to, you know, figure out better ways to, to follow up with you guys on, on things you bring up.
Well, I, I'll say this, when I have, when I have had code issues and things, and I've reported to Matt, when I reported to Matt, Matt is very responsive as to where we're at.
Yeah.
Where we're going. And I think sometimes, all it is, is for you to email Matt, and he'll tell you what's going on.
Yeah.
That's all you gotta do.
Yeah.
That's been my experience with him.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the issues we're having over there on East Eisenhower, and he's right on it.
Yeah.
And he shoots me everything.
As you get, though.
What?
Well, he gets as grumpy as you get.